All right, it is seven o'clock and we'd like to start on time. So thank you all for being here. Just a friendly reminder, if you have cell phones or electronic devices with you, please put them on airplane mode as I will do too. So they don't disrupt the meeting. And... There you go. And then our next order of business, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, thank you for coming and welcome all of you here this evening. This is a special night. We are going to be swearing in, officially swearing in, two new council members, Peter Vickery and Claudia Lacy. And we're going to start out, I think we'll start out with Claudia. So if you will join me up front there, I have to find the oath so I can read it to you.
So this is the official, not at all as you wanted, but... All right, raise your right hand. I am Claudia Lacy.
I am Claudia Lacy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
Of the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
Of the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you.
They might say something. So welcome, Peter. So repeat after me. I am Peter Vickery.
I am Peter Vickery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
Of the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
Of the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So now that we have the two new council members officially sworn in, I will make introductions. So I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy. And on the end, we have our Adam Gabois with WSB, our engineer, sitting in for Allison Falsky this evening. And then we have our Director of Public Works, Gary Peters. And then we have our City Clerk, Don Moscow. To my right, I have Jasper Krugel, who is our City Administrator, Brian Grimm, our Finance Director, David Abel is our Community Development Director. And then Sam Ketchum is sitting in for our regular attorney, Sarah Sensala. Welcome, Sam. And then on the end, we have our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. With that, we'll move on to approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We don't have any special presentations this evening, but we do have, we have some people signed up under Persons to be Heard. We'll start out with Jeremiah Sandell. So Persons to be Heard, I'll just come forward, please. You'll have to come to the podium. You'll have to state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes. We don't act on anything here this evening, but we will give staff direction as to what the next steps would be. So welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jeremiah Sandell. I live at 3800 Kings Point Road in Minnetrista. And the matter of my business, I'll try to keep it short, is we have property between our house and the creek, Six Mile Creek. And it is city property. We would like to purchase it. It is our view. So I'd interacted with Nicholas Olson over email and he told me that I could come and present to you the option to try and buy the property from the city. And he walked me through some of the steps and we are interested in proceeding if the city council would approve selling the property to us.
Okay, we generally don't sell Lake Shore property. I think we'll have to direct this to staff and bring this back at a work session so they can give us all of the pertinent details. It'll depend on how we acquired the property, who we acquired it from. There's a lot of different intricacies that we would have to know about before we could make any decision. So we'll just have you bring that back, have staff bring it back at a future work session. And you can just notify Mr. Sandell when we'll do that. It may not be next, this month, it might be next month.
We are not in a hurry, so.
Okay.
Because we're particularly happy. I understand that some of the property on the other side of the creek was sold recently. So it's the same vacant land, tracts, that I believe were forfeited back in the eighties.
Okay.
So that's the status of it. And I don't believe it's under current use. It's all wetland.
Right.
So I don't think the city has any use for it, but I could be wrong. So happy to come back.
Then I know, I know what you're talking about. Great, okay. Great, thank you.
Excellent.
Next, we have Jane Anderson. And then we also have Bart Holling. Did both of you want to speak together? Okay. And I do understand you're going to be on our agenda at our next meeting.
Yes.
So this one will be brief.
Yes.
Again, three minutes. And then, again, you'll have to state your name and address for the record.
Jane Anderson, 5060 Edgewater Drive, Mountain, Minnesota.
Bart Holling, 5513 Sherwood Drive, Mountain, Minnesota.
Thank you. And what a great way to start the year. Congratulations, Claudia and Peter. I'm so happy for you. I would have hoped for you to have lived here, so. But I don't. I live in Mountain. And I live on Harrison's Bay. And we had a problem with weeds a couple of years ago. And I got active and I got involved and I got educated. And in your packet, you may see, the first slide is what we're calling the West Tonka Carp Project. And last year, Sherry Wallace and myself co-founded the Harrison's Bay Association. And you will, I want to let you know just a little bit about it. We have, if you're looking at this map here, we have 200 Lake Shore owners. And we've got about 100 dock rentals. And we've formed an association. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3). And our mission is multi-fold. It is basically about community. It is about getting clean water, the Clean Water Initiative. And under that is invasive vegetation and invasive fish carp. We are trying to form a coalition to address this problem. And that's the part I'm going to talk to you about in a couple of weeks. What we've done so far is formed partnerships with LMCP, with Minnehaha Watershed District, with the DNR, with...
Bowser.
But the Bowser, the University of Minnesota State, to try and form this coalition to address these, this big issue. And with that, I'd like to just introduce my colleague. So Bart and I are both on the board. We have five board members and Bart is my colleague on the board.
Okay.
Thank you. The only other thing I guess I would add is that we've really felt some increased energy around this carp issue in our bay and also in the bays that abut with Harrison. So think about West Arm and Jennings and Forest Lake and the Seaton Channel. And we know that this whole side of the lake has experienced some challenges with the common carp. That's been around for a long time. And I come back, it represents a nice background of the carp and its history in Minnesota. I should be able to see. And we've also been able to very quickly, within a year of forming the association, actually bring together some resources and financing to do some studies around how bad that carp problem really is and what it's actually producing for impact to water quality. So that's something else that we'll be really excited to share with you. And we do think it is a multifaceted, multi-community challenge that we have to try to address. Lake Minnetoka is not just a single body of water. Right, we've got many, many bays that feed each other. A lot of the bays to the east of us are fed through our watershed, through Six Mile Creek, through Painters Creek, through all the bays on this side of the lake. And a lot of those challenges that we see here feed into the rest of the lake, which is why we're trying to build a coalition around that. And we should do some great education and build some energy and some resources to try to address that problem. So we'll be excited to partner with the Minnetrista City Council as well.
And we'll look forward to your presentation next, I think our, the 23rd, right?
Yeah, 23rd.
All right.
And we just wanted today to make an acquaintance with you and you with us and thank you for your time.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove? Okay, with none removal, they consist of consent agenda items A through J. It's approve our work session meeting minutes from December 5th, 2022. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from December 5th, 2022. C is authorize Kennedy and Graven to engage media com and cable franchise. V, agreement negotiations. D is a resolution to approve claims. E is a resolution to authorize approved signers. F is approve plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid, city project number 01-23. And G is a resolution to approve plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid, city project number 02-23. And H is a resolution to approve allocation of ARPA funds for the 3/31/23 reporting period. And R, J, I'm sorry. I is a resolution to approve and accept the public improvements for the Jennings Bay Villas. And J is approve delegated contract process agreement with MinDOT. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through J?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to our public hearings. We do have one public hearing this evening and it's in regards to our bonds and street reconstruction finance plan and bond sale. Do you want to?
I can start, yes, Madam Mayor, thanks, and council. So this was, I guess that the draft plan was in the packet at the December 5th meeting and we called for the public hearing. And this is for the street projects, the 2023 street projects and those associated with more of the mill and overlay, the Chapter 475 process. So the non-assessable roads, I guess the roads we're not assessing. So what was in your packet, starting on page 59, was the, I guess sort of more the finalized plan of our street reconstruction finance plan. And I guess, yeah, technically, we have to have the public hearing on it and then the first business item after that is to approve that plan and I guess authorize to go out for bonds in regards to those street projects. So I don't know. Todd, do you have anything to add right now or I guess? Todd Hagan with Ellers.
Thank you. Brian, very well said. You took the wind out of the sails.
Okay.
Other than that, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys again. Going to try to get some cake maybe on my way out. But yeah, Brian had talked about the street reconstruction finance plan. We're going to talk about the bonds a little bit later on in the agenda, but it's just, again, one facet of the financing and it is for the, more of the reconstruction overlay projects and not the assessable street projects. Those are under a different statute that we're going under and those have separate public hearings. So this, this is a plan we put together with the help of a city engineer. It's really one snapshot of the 2023 street reconstruction projects. We did add 24 through 27 in there too, just for illustration purposes, just so you folks can kind of take a look at what else is slated in those years to be financed. There's also a map, you know, in the plan. So it's a pretty short, sweet, easy to read finance plan, again, necessary to gain state law bond issuance authority. And then we have to wait about 30 days from, from tonight to even consider issuing, issuing bonds. So we're kind of way ahead of the bond part and we just want to kind of get through this, this section. So we're here for any questions, our comments from the public or the council at this point.
Yeah, we'll talk more about the bonds, but I think right now what I'll do is, thank you, Mr. Ellers. Open up the public hearing. I don't think anybody is here for the public hearing, but I have to officially open it up. So I'm opening up the public hearing. Anybody that has a question or wishes to make comments regarding the bond sale, you can do so at this time. Nobody's here, so I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to council. Any comments or questions that you might have regarding the, the public hearing portion? We'll be talking about the bonds here in just a second. So there's three different kinds of bonds that we're thinking of. There's a 429 bond, there's a 475 bond, and the 444 bond, I believe. And then the, also the equipment certificate. So it's a number of different issues. So we're, just to make sure that we clearly understand, and there's one bond that is, could potentially have a referendum, a reverse referendum, it's called. So that bond is a 475 bond. If, if that were to happen, we would not then be able to do the mill and overlays. We can still do all of the other projects. I don't foresee that happening, but I'm just giving you a heads up. So we would have to have a petition of 245 residents opposing the sale of that bond. But the other bonds, we could still do. We can still do the reconstruction bond. We can still do the water bond for the infrastructure and we can do the equipment certificates. So with that, we'll move on to the next business item and that's now... Oh, any questions regarding the street reconstruction or the street plan? Because again, that can be changed on a, on a annual basis. We can revisit it and we can make that change. But in order to qualify for these bonds, we have to have the five-year plan. So, okay? All right. With that, Mr. Ellers, Mr. Hagan. Wouldn't that be nice, right?
It's like Mr. Baseball or something, Mr. Ellers.
Okay.
Probably on to the council, okay, with moving on to the, the business item of approving that...
Considering giving preliminary approval for the insurance bonds, right?
Yep, yep. So yeah, I think that resolution is on page 77. It starts on the packet. It's the resolution to adopt the street reconstruction, reconstruction plan and authorizing issuance of street reconstruction bonds thereunder, so.
The only, the only comment I would have in our packet, it states that these bonds are 20-year bonds. That's incorrect. The equipment certificate is a five-year bond. So the other ones are 20-year bonds. So the 475 and the 429 and the 444, those are all 20-year bonds. Equipment certificate is a five-year bond. Okay, just because in a, in our packet, it said it was a 20-year bond. Yes, right. So, so any other questions?
What would the equipment certificate bonds be used for then if they're so much shorter?
Those were part of our, good question. They were, it's part of our 2023 budget process. We had basically our CIP equipment plan and we had a couple, it's a squad, or is it two squads, Paul? Or two squads and Gary had a piece of equipment. So it was more to finance some of those operational pieces in police and public works as well as some technology items, you know, for, for City Hall. So.
So it wasn't...
No, but the other thing you should be aware of, equipment certificates can only be used for capital improvement items, such as squad cars or, or dump trucks and things like that. So it's not for water infrastructure or sewer infrastructure. It's for capital improvement.
The main reason we're just pretty much wrapping it all into one bond issuance. I mean, it was, it was part of our 2023 budget process for these equipment items, but it was seeing we're going out for these road projects too, we're just pretty much wrapping into one issuance to save on issuance costs and I guess economies of scale and so.
Because it would cost quite a lot to do a $245, $65,000 bond.
On its own.
You know, on its own, so.
Other questions? All right. So staff, you're looking for approval of the, of the issuance, of the approval for the issuance bonds and approving the street reconstruction plan. Now, the problem is we still need to talk about which route we're going to go if we're going to do the 10 million or the 8 million. Are we going to talk about that next? Okay, so this is for the reconstruction, the street reconstruction plan is what you want? All right. So is there approval to approve the street reconstruction plan as presented in our packet?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now we'll go on to discussing the bonds itself. And I believe that's Mr. Hagan again. So we had two options, the 8 million and the 10 million. I think there'll be some discussion around this.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So we have a pre-sell report at council packets. We're not selling bonds tonight. We've got a ways to go on that, but thought that it would be nice after the public hearing just to kind of show you guys where the roadmap basically of where we're going with the bond issue. Again, like the mayor said, we have to wait at least 30 days for that reverse referendum period to end on this street reconstruction plan. So really, we don't kind of get started again on the bond issue until after February 8th. So we got like a month kind of to wait here. And then in between waiting, between now and then, we've got some, some bidding, right? That's going to come in on the street projects. Some, some on the 8th of February, on the 1st of February, on the 22nd of February to kind of, you know, kind of fine-tune the bond issue before we even think about bond sale. So we're looking at maybe a bond sale. Again, it's competitive, resold in the market on March 6th or March 20th, kind of depending on sort of what route we want to take. Giving you some flexibility in the resolution that's in your packet for that, actually. So give me some flexibility for the, for the paramount of the bonds, either 10 million or 8 million. And then when we're selling, you need them March 6th or March 20th. So lots of flexibility in there because we still have some moving parts as far as bidding the projects. So because we do want to wait until most of that is bid and not, not issue bonds on an estimate. So like the mayor had said, it's a, it's a bundled bond, so to speak, just like the progressive insurance folks, right? So we're going to do four, four purposes into one bond. Back in the olden days, way, way back, we probably would have issued a series A, B, C, D bond issue. This way, we've got one bond with four purposes. Again, three 20-year schedules and then the one 10-year for the equipment.
Five.
And so it's really, I mean, five for the equipment. And, and so it's pretty, pretty easy then for staff to keep track of all this. We've got four streams in there. So, so yeah, and again, we're trying to capture the economies of scale by bundling this together. And as you know, interest rates are, you know, continue to kind of, well, they've ticked up, right? In the, in, for a while here. And we have put a little cushion in there between now and March, expecting something else to happen. Hopefully it doesn't. But before I get into, into that, we've had some really good, basically competitive bids, especially today, I just want to say. We have four school districts. I think Ellers sold the only four that were for sale here in Minnesota today. And I think the bids that came in were between like 12 and 14 bids on each, each one of those. We had a school district bond last week that had 18 bids. And you know who, we've been here before, that, you know, if we get five bids, that's a great day, right? Four, four, five bids. So, so the market's hungry out there, you know, even though rates have gone up and there's lots of competition. So that's the thing, that's what we do. Throw this out to the market and see, see what we get. You guys are a double A-plus rated city, you know, one notch under a triple A, so that's pretty high quality out there too. And so they'll be looking at Minnetrista for a good quality bond issue as well. So looking for that.
Mr. Ellers, will these be tax exempt?
Yeah, tax exempt.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason we've kind of got the choice from eight to 10 million is that the feds have a limitation as far as bank qualification. So institutions, banks have, not only get the bonds are tax exempt, they're also able to deduct the carrying costs up to $10 million of, of bonds for a city. And that's in a calendar year. So if you wanted to just get right up to that 10 million, which is an option, you can do that for that reason. And to finance two new wells, obviously too, if that's what you want to do to maximize what we know right now in the market or you can scale that back to the 8 million without the two new wells and then finance those at some other time. So kind of hedging your back, right? As we go through this sort of weird time we're in as far as interest rates are concerned, kind of lock it lower or kind of revisit that later, you know, too. So those are kind of the, the two choices, basically.
My, my concern about bonding for nearly 2 million, not quite, but nearly 2 million for two new wells, one, we're not exactly sure if we're going to need two new wells. We might need one. Two, we don't know the timing of those wells yet. And three, we may even qualify for PFA loans for the wells. So I'd like, my opinion is we might want to hold off on that. Plus, plus, we are going to have to bond something, we know for sure, for the water treatment plant. So that's going to be more. Now, I know we're, we're probably going to have to be looking at that $10 million cap or ceiling for that, but I, I'd kind of like to hold off.
Yeah, and, and you can even wait until, you know, February 6th is another council meeting, right? Where actually we'll have sort of a better handle on some of these other projects as well. And again, we've got, you know, kind of a month out right now, so we have some more time to, to wait. So we could actually revisit this on February 6th. If you want to just maybe do a modified report here, I could do. And then you could maybe make that decision at that time as well.
Okay.
If you pass this resolution, it's just kind of gives it the flexibility of either or at this point. So I don't want to pressure you tonight, but you could think about it a little bit more. I just wanted to get it out there, because I talked about it a few months ago.
Okay.
So the last month and the month before, so.
And I don't know if we can get more information on all the other things I mentioned between now and then or not, but, but we'll know more on the road. When are the bids opening for the road?
February 8th.
February 8th.
And then the 21st for the street recon.
I'm not going to know that much until February 6th.
Yep.
I'm not going to know any of the industry. We're not going to know, we're not going to know a lot of the concerns that we have because I'm with you as far as sticking to the 8.3. But do we think interest rates could possibly go down by September? And then we'd have to wait till September.
Why September?
No, just because, well, they're talking about it so that month.
Oh.
I guess, I don't envision this unless someone else has a differing opinion. I don't know if we'll be ready to issue any other wells or water treatment before 2024. So I, after thinking about it more, would be more issuing closer to 8 million in debt versus 10 million based on, I don't think we're anywhere near getting ready to do any financing on the wells yet. If you would ask me three, four months ago when AD2S was coming on board, I thought things were moving quicker and, and maybe, and quicker's not always better. So if there's things that need to be looked at, one versus two or this area versus that area. But I don't think we're at the point of, I know even we can hold on to the bond proceeds for, you know, eight, 12, 24 months or whatever, but I don't.
But then we're paying interest on it too.
We are, yeah.
And then, and sure, you're paying, you know, you're paying interest on it, even it's a 5.1 or 5.2. And you can have it in a bank account maybe, but you're only going to get maybe 3% or something less than that. So you're still paying interest on a couple million dollars that's just sitting there.
That's true, yeah.
So, I mean, if we don't have to decide, I mean, it would be nice to decide tonight, but, and we can make that finalization on the 6th. But if we're not going to know, I guess my question to, to Ms. McGregor's comment is, since we won't know the bids, why would we want to lock in on the 6th?
Right, probably be the, might be the 20th then.
Would it be the 20th or 22nd or whatever?
I think we're going to have to, or we would want to do that.
Yeah.
But if you know you're not going to do the two wells, then we'll just, you know, go with that tonight and then we'll just readjust all the other numbers as those bids come in and then we should be good so that we don't have to talk about the wells if you don't.
Is there anybody here who wants us to do the 10 tonight? Because I want to hear from them.
If I may, I don't, I don't think we need to. I think there's...
If I may, I don't, I don't think we need to. I think there's some options that we'll look at when the wells come in, like PFA, and we'll, we'll evaluate those to see if that makes sense financially to use. So I think you're safe to do it with the eight, and then revisit the wells as we get those numbers. Because we're not going to have well bid numbers by the time we issue the debt anyway. Yeah, not even close. So if you remember from when AD2S presented, I think in December, they were talking the end of 2023 potentially to start the well project. So I think, I think it'd be wise to hold off on the $10 million and just, just wait on the 8.3, or do the 8.3 and then address the wells as they become closer, more imminent.
Will that create a problem, though, with getting the water treatment plant? If, I think you said that was 10 million and then.
Well, you can issue more than 10. It's just that you get that little extra bank qualification if you're not over 10. So we've issued more than.
Right, but we could, so the water treatment plants probably aren't even going to be started until 24. Is that about right? And so if they're started in 24, we, we could even do, let's just say, a 10 million in 24 for the water treatment plant and wells, because the wells and the treatment plant could be done simultaneously. And then in 25, if we need another 4 million, whatever it is, we could then bond another, the balance. If, you know, there's different ways of looking at it. We're hoping to get more money from other places. So, you know, that might be a good excuse, I mean, reason why.
Maybe for Claudia and Peter, we could explain PFA loans.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, so I was gonna, if I may, I was gonna just explain and maybe Todd can help out. Like, there's a, there's a premium you pay for tax exempt versus taxable bonds. And I think that's what, that threshold is $10 million. So if we go above $10 million, now it's taxable and you pay. Is that correct?
It's tax exempt, but it's not bank qualified.
That's right, okay.
Thank you.
So you pay a little bit, and I don't know what that premium is. It varies, but.
We have that scaled a few months ago. We kind of looked at it and it varies from, you know, it sort of gets larger, you know, the spread gets larger as you go farther. So it's probably between 10 basis points and 25, depending on how far you.
You know what's the difference between the tax-free and versus tax?
Well, they're both, they're both be tax exempt, so it all qualifies as tax exempt. It's just that if you're over 10 million in a calendar year, it can't be bank qualified, but it can still be tax exempt. So, yeah, we very seldom go down the taxable route, like, you know, when we get more of what a PFA loan is. We were able to, I think, last time, we issued quite a bit for the water system.
Right.
We were able to lock in with, with those folks with this, this state of Minnesota at the exact same rate as what a tax exempt and a taxable would be. Because they get their money, Public Facilities Authority gives their money from issuing a big state bond. And then they do spin-off loans to everybody. And then it's benchmark on the public market, but then it's subsidized. So it's typically a 100 basis points or 1% or a little bit better than that, lower, if you qualify, you know, if your project qualifies. That's a Jasper's hike.
Maybe just a.
That's sort of what you get into, and great if you could get a grant, too, but the low interest loan is pretty nice.
I think just to summarize, so like, if it's bank qualified, say the interest rate is 4%, but if it's not bank qualified, maybe it's 4.1 or 4.25 or something. If we had to go over it, it'd be something slightly. It's not, it's the interest rate you pay doesn't have anything to do with any.
Just the interest.
Interest, and they're both tax exempt.
Because their municipal bonds are tax exempt.
Yeah, for the purpose we're doing here, it's governmental, so it's all tax exempt.
And PFA, Public Facilities Authority, there's sometimes some strings attached to that about like where you purchase materials from and things like that. So that can drive up the cost of the project. So those are things that we'll work with everybody to figure out what the best fit would be, PFA versus traditional bonding, and then make a decision on what we want to do. So I think with the well project, and then hopefully, you know, get some grants or, you know, something like that, that we can use for the wells as well.
There's advantages and disadvantages to the PFA, too. The PFA, you can't prepay. In other words, it's a 20-year loan, you can't prepay it. Whereas these bonds, I'm sure there's a call date.
Nine years or so.
Nine years, okay. So then if interest rates go down, nine years from now, you could refinance it if it makes sense financially. Whereas a PFA loan, you can't. But generally, a PFA loan is, is cheaper at the beginning, too.
So you're sort of saving at the.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the theory.
Right.
Yeah. One of the other things with PFA is that you only pay interest on what you draw, too. So if you have a project, $10 million project, and you're, as you're drawing money, you're only paying interest on the money that you draw. Versus when you sell a bond, you start paying interest immediately on the full amount. So there's some benefits, and once we get to that point, we would weigh those, you know, costs and benefits and make a decision on which route we would go.
So the thing you want to do is apply, apply, apply for this kind of stuff. And then make a decision later. Don't not apply.
Well, and that's the other thing, you have to qualify. And there's certain things that qualify and certain things that don't. So we want to, we want to make ourselves look as good as, as bad as possible, maybe, is I guess the better way of saying it. We're in dire need of this, so there's certain things you have to, to qualify for, so.
And I'll just give a brief update right now on the, on the PFA. This is kind of old news. But for the wells that we've scored high enough, where those qualify for just the baseline, if it gets funded or not, that's another story for PFA. For the treatment plant, we didn't score high enough, so.
Right. But we could always do a sound story, maybe, or something? I don't know.
We can try.
All right. But, yeah, we'll, we'll try every avenue.
Well, that's good. We'll plan on the 8 million then, and then make any adjustments per those street bids that come in as we go forward.
Right. So you'll be back here on the 21st, or?
22nd.
It's the 22nd.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
February 22nd, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
For update. Yep.
Okay. All right. So we don't have to do the pre-sale report?
Or should we adopt that still right now?
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the, consider authorizing Ellers to provide for bond sale, which would be adopting the pre-sale report. Thank you. Is there a motion? Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Refkin made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. All right, so now, thank you, Mr. Hagan. Not Mr. Ellers. And have a piece of cake on your way out, please. All right. Next, we have appointments. What page are those on? Like 121?
114.
114. Just a, I think 117.
Sorry, 116, maybe, sorry.
All right. So just a couple things. I just want to make a couple comments here. So the police, it's, it's really not the Police Communications Committee, it's called a Public Safety Committee, right?
Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, so. So that, and also, just so you know, this, especially for our new members here. The, the members of that committee are actually dictated by the contract that we have, our police contract that we have with St. Boniface. And those are by contract, the mayor of both cities, the police chief, and the city administrator of both cities. So you have no choice in that matter. So just saying. And then the other thing I did want to mention, too, on, on the write-ups here, the, let's see. It was the Pineusera Creek Watershed Commission. The member that's appointed to this is actually a commissioner, a voting, full-pledged commissioner. And then we also want to designate an alternate. And this is a joint powers agreement, a JPA. And because of that, the JPA spells out that you can designate by resolution an alternate. And if the commissioner is absent or not able to attend, the alternate can attend and have full voting power. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is the Gillespie Center. The appointee to the Gillespie Center is actually a full-board voting member. So not just an individual that goes there and has fun, although I hope you do. So with that, anything else?
No, I think you covered it.
So we had in our packet, Jasper and I kind of put our heads together and said, okay, what do we think would be good fits? We're recommending Kathleen Refkin as the acting mayor. Are we okay with that? Okay. I did feel that somebody that's been here a little while should, should be, have, hold that position. So congratulations, Kathleen. The Economic Development Authority are all of us. And then the Personnel Committee, I'm recommending this year that I stay on. It says McGregor, but I think, and you had said maybe Councilmember Refkin. Okay, and I'm going to, again, recommend this year specifically because we have union contracts that need to be negotiated, which of course staff does. But I think that it's good to have a more seasoned council member on board for that. If next year, and then the other reason is, I'd like to have, I've been on the Personnel Committee for a while, so I have a little bit of experience. And then Kathleen will, Ms. Refkin will come on board and she'll gain some experience. And next year, if somebody else would like to take my place, think about that. And then we can have some overlap with experience and maybe none. So if you're okay with Ms. Refkin, myself and Ms. Refkin being on the Personnel Committee. Planning Commission, we do that by rotating. So you all, we all get a chance to meet all of our planning commissioners and participate, be present at the meetings. It's usually maybe one or two, a couple meetings a year. And then also same with our Parks Commission, we do that on a rotating basis. And then our Public Safety Committee, Advisory Committee, and then we have our Fire Advisory Committee, St. Boniface. That has been Councilmember Refkin. I think she needs to stay. She's done a great job. And then our Fire Advisory Committee for Mound, again, Ms. Refkin is that. We kind of decided to put those two together since they're somewhat similar. And sometimes I attend, I'm not an official representative, but Ms. Refkin has been doing such a great job, I haven't had to attend. And then the Northwest Hennepin League is generally a mayor. And then the Regional Council of Mayors, of course, a mayor. The Lake Minnetonka Conservation District has been Michael Kirkwood. I would highly recommend that we continue with Mr. Kirkwood in that capacity. The LMCD is very time-consuming. It's two meetings a month, board meetings, plus they have work sessions prior to the board meetings. Plus they have committees, and they do anticipate or expect their, their members, their board members to participate in the committees as well. So I, from my experience, I can tell you, it's somewhat time-consuming. So I would highly recommend if Mr. Kirkwood is interested in continuing in that capacity, that would be just fantastic. And then the Minniac Creek Watershed District, that is simply a liaison position if there's anything that comes up. Just kind of so you know, I have a fairly extensive background in water issues. So both on the Pineusera Creek Watershed Commission as well as in other organizations regarding water. So I have a very extensive water background. If you have questions, ask me. I probably don't know the answer, but I will try. And then the Pineusera Creek, we're recommending Peter Vickery as the appointee. If that would be okay, Peter?
I think so. I would want some backup, and it looks like I've got plenty of that.
Okay, so the alternate could be Ms. McGregor, or, or I asked Mr. Chumperlin back in December before he left if he would be interested in being the alternate. What is your pleasure, Ms. McGregor?
Can Jones do it?
Yep, he said he would do the alternate. He didn't want to do the commission.
Oh, then I can do the alternate.
Okay, okay. I thought it would be good because it does take a while to get caught up in the water world. I mean, the acronyms itself, believe me. You're going to go, what is a PAC? What is a PAC? What is, what is Bowser? What, anyhow, you'll learn. So, so we'll do Peter Vickery as the appointee and the alternate will be Mr. Chumperlin. And then the Gillespie Center, and Ms. McGregor has been doing a fantastic job. Thank you very much. I hope you will continue.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then we have the West Tonka Community in Commerce. Ms. Lacy, would you like to be the official city representative?
Seems like a good fit.
That seems good. That's what we thought. Now, the Assistant Weed Inspector, did you, okay, just so you know, by state statute, I am the official weed inspector. But we, we have a gentleman in our, in our midst that is willing to be the Assistant Weed Inspector and do my job for me. So Mr. Peters.
Not really willing, but.
So Mr. Peters will be our Assistant Weed Inspector. Yes, he, he has to do it. Any questions on the Depository Electronic Funds Transfer Authority, Fiscal Agents, Official Newspaper? Okay. If, if all of those are in order, I think we can just make one motion to appoint all of the designees as discussed. I don't think, with the one exception, Ms. McGregor will be replaced under Personnel Committee with Ms. Refkin. Is there a motion to approve these appointments for 2023?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those.
I'm staying because of the banking for my job. I can't.
Okay. All right, thank you. All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes for one abstention, for ayes, one abstention, Mr. Vickery. And then we're moving on to ordinance number 481, which is related to the fee schedule. Do you want to make any comments?
I can entertain any questions. This is the process for amending an ordinance for the fee schedule that we adopted via ordinance back in December. So a new ordinance amending the old ordinance. You can see the differences in this, basically combining the school and the commercial into one with the tiers, 0 to 300, 300 to 600,000, and then 600,000 plus. We're here to entertain any questions. We kind of went over this in the work session, and if there's additional questions, we're here to assist.
So we're not making any changes other than to the water rates for commercial and the school, eliminating the school category and making it all commercial category, as we discussed at the work session. So any other questions, comments?
I just have one comment. I talked to Jasper about it earlier, just determining specific guidelines for what's considered commercial. Because I asked why the HOAs weren't considered commercial. So I think it'd be good if staff comes back with finite wording. So anyone who has questions about what's considered commercial and what's not, it's written down and it's not open to interpretation by anybody.
Good idea.
Since we're dealing with it now.
Yep. That, that doesn't have to necessarily be part of the ordinance, does it?
No, just bringing it up while we're discussing.
All right. All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, hearing none, then. Is there a motion to approve the amended ordinance relating to the 2023 fee schedule, particularly to the water rates?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed.
Nay.
Four ayes and Mr. Vickery, nay. Thank you. All right. So next we'll move on to, that concludes our business items, so we'll move on to our staff reports.
I don't, Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't have anything in particular, just welcome Councilmember Vickery, Councilmember Lacy. And I'm here to assist. We went through, I had the pleasure of going through orientation, just base level orientation with Mr. Vickery and Ms. Lacy. And, you know, the big thing is, we're here to assist. If you have questions, you need any accommodations, let us know. I think in the upcoming couple weeks, there'll be some individual department head meetings between the two and, you know, come with questions. I know you probably have a lot of questions, so talk to the, talk to the experts in public works and finance, community development, police. And Ally's not here, but administration, so that's, that's all, welcome.
Thank you.
So then we'll move on to council reports. So in December, I was supposed to attend the Northwest League, however, I was sick, not able to go. It was a special meeting recognizing our public safety people. So our chief, Paul Falls, went, and then also Jasper just went in my stead. I said, well, maybe if you wear a blonde wig, they won't notice. But they did notice, so. So thank you very much for going, and I know it was a nice turnout and appreciate all of your service, chief. So anyhow, also attended the Rotary's Annual Christmas Luncheon, and Jasper and I both attended. It was very nice, always is. And then I'll also be attending the Gillespie Annual Board Meeting, which is going to be January 19th. So I will go to that, and I think, are you going to that, too?
I will be attending as well.
So we'll do some networking and so on. Just a reminder that our next meeting is the 23rd, which is unusual. Uh, just a reminder that our next meeting is the 23rd, which is unusual. Normally it's the, the first and third, but this, um, this month, it's the second and fourth Mondays. And then with that, we're moving our Planning Commission meeting to the 30th, which is the fifth Monday, which we have this month, and I will be attending the Planning Commission meeting, um, and I will be swearing in our new commissioners. And then, um, just a reminder, sign up for the Capitol Day on March 9th if you'd like to join us. There's strength in numbers, so if we get a bigger group, the better it is. And um, I think that's all I have. Ms. Refkin, anything?
Um, Jasper and I attended the Mound Fire Commission meeting back in December. It went well. Um, the biggest issue, again, continues to be the types of calls that firefighters are getting. Most of them are medical assistance, lift assistance, um, 70% of their calls are rescue versus fire. Um, as it's set up now, volunteer firefighters have to respond to a certain percentage of calls, and it's not an issue yet, but it likely will start becoming an issue as firefighters don't want to wake up at 2:00 in the morning to go lift someone. So we definitely need to start discussing more how we can fix this. Um, it's going to require a lot of compromising on what's required from EMSs and then making sure the um, care facilities have staff on site to lift people that are there that they can't do. Um, we discussed talking with um, our representatives of the legislature to see how they can address it. Um, so those will be issues that will continue to be talked about. Um, also talked about possibly talking to our representatives for increasing the money that the firehouses get for mutual aid, as more and more fire stations become salaried, they have less people to answer, so mutual aid by Mound and other neighboring communities is going up because they have volunteers to do it. They want to keep doing that, the volunteers like going to actual fires and things that require mutual aid. So it's just making sure that we're compensated for how much they're providing. Because obviously, the payment for all the volunteers comes out of the budget of us, and, but they're responding to a lot more calls outside of our area. The next meeting is January 26th, which I will be attending. Um, Mound, the budget for Mound Fire for next year is 1.2 million, which comes out to be about $190 per household, which is still very, very cheap for the state of Minnesota. And then I will be attending the Capitol Day on the Hill on March 9th. And that's why Lisa doesn't go to the fire meetings.
Thank you. And anything?
Yes, everything wrapped, I've never heard of it since.
Okay. Any comments, Mr. Vickery?
Well, I'd just like to thank you all for the warm welcome that you've given me. It, it really has been gratifying, and I answered all my questions, and I hope you'll keep giving them.
We will. Like I said, ask your questions, because if you don't ask, you don't know, you don't learn. Good, just, Lacy?
Thank you, I'm, I'm excited to hear more about the fire departments because I had a long conversation yesterday with a fireman, um, who lives in Mound but volunteers for Long Lake. And there seems to be a lot going on with these firehouses.
Yep. Long Lake and Orno is a whole, there's a whole, we certainly do not have to deal with.
That's great, that we don't have to deal with, but is it, is it correct that, um, when there is a situation, all of the fire stations respond?
It depends on the type of fire call and what they need.
So not like picking someone out, but if it's just.
So there's different tiers of calls, so the first call goes out if there's a fire in Orno, the first tier goes out, Orno, Long Lake responds. And then if they need like the Mound ladder truck or something, then they do a second call and those respond, and then it just keeps going, depending on the type of fires.
Right.
There's a lot to learn.
Yes, it is, it's cool, I like those meetings.
Okay, so again, welcome aboard, looking forward to working with both, with all of you, um, this coming year. It's been, um, we had, I think, some very productive past two years. We've gotten a lot accomplished, and we're looking forward to doing more, and we'll have our strategic planning meeting on February 21st, 22nd? And so come with your ideas, and so start thinking about that now, um, what things you might want to see accomplished over the next two years. We usually do it for a two-year.
Yep, and I'll add one note, um, there will be a short survey that I'll email out to the group that you can kind of put what your priorities are. Um, I'll share some of the information that we had from the previous session, so we can kind of set the table. I've done the same with staff internally already, but we'll get the input from council and kind of blend the two.
And we'll meet here, and we're going to meet at 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock, yep.
3 o'clock, so put it on your calendar, 3 o'clock, and that would be the second meeting in February 22nd.
Yep, yeah, 3 to, 3 to 5, hopefully, and then a short break between that and the work session, and if we need to, if we need to have multiple strategic planning sessions, we can, um, but we're just going to start with one.
Okay. All right. So thank you, staff, for being here, also Sam, for all of your input. Thank you. And you can tell Ms. Volski that we missed her. So, thank you, Mr. Gabois. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes by vote, thank you.